Looking for, yeah, original design?
All, select, three.
There we go, municipal offices.
You have to, you have to pass this. Well, it's so quiet, I'll make a public announcement. The King's Neptune's Brides Party they had every year donated a thousand dollars to St. Harbor, and we really appreciate that.
Nice.
There it goes. So, I believe they all dress up as hippies this year?
Hippies.
Hippies. We're all hippies. And we're really very, very appreciative of that. Go along with, in support of our St. Harbor project. We have a Bateman, is she gonna be involved?
This is what I was just confirming with her. These are separate documents that she needs for what you had, what gender.
Oh, okay, so, um...
It's a tax collector.
So, I'll make a motion that we sign this tax Bateman form for our tax collector on the three issues we were discussing. All of them. Now, is that what's on the agenda here, sign of Bateman?
Yep.
Oh, okay, so, just a different meaning.
So, we had to sign a selectment.
Right.
So, accessory.
Bids on auction, I have this. What bids? We did. What happened?
Close enough, yes.
So, the fire department, old SCBA units, had the current highest bid was seventy-seven dollars and fifty cents.
For what, Chris?
The old SCBA air packs and the tanks.
Oh.
So, highest bid was seventy-seven dollars and fifty cents. The GMC top kick, lovingly known as the Crow, highest bid was five hundred and twenty dollars.
But these, there's no reserves, so they just got them.
Well, you guys have to accept them.
Oh, okay.
They're not final until you approve them. These are in your packet.
But, oh, okay.
The Sander is, the highest bid is four hundred and ten dollars. The hot air furnace at the old Public Works garage, a hundred and fifteen dollars. And the sea salt processing unit that came, um, yep, not came out.
P-100.
Yes. One thousand one hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, they're all real close to the minimums.
Very close.
So, we can accept that?
You can accept those amounts. I did email our attorney today to find out the process for foreclosure. That equipment, the sea salt processing, has technically not been foreclosed upon yet by the Fire Left. I have not got a response yet back to find out how much it's gonna cost to foreclose. Doesn't make a lot of sense if it's gonna cost us eleven hundred dollars to foreclose.
Yeah.
So, I don't know what to want to do with that.
We all have to make a motion to accept the bids, provided we can afford the foreclosure, we make money on it.
Do we know where the owner is of the salt processing?
Your point is we have to go through a foreclosure. So, why don't you turn down that?
Can we make a motion to accept all bids?
Yes.
Uh, let's say, provided on, um, the O-05 sea salt processing that it is relative to the foreclosure.
Is it just, it's just that one page that has to foreclose them?
Okay.
How long has he not been in business?
We need to make a...
Eighteen years.
We need to make a motion on that.
Doesn't work the same as if you have other boys, other boys, or the boys, lack of, you know, your spouse disappears for ten years.
Five provision that meets the...
Second, we have a second line on, a second on Dan, a second Dan's bid. All in favor? Motion, I mean. Let's look together, man. That's a good idea. I liked it. All right, now, very good, Dan. They should work both together. That's been a half year. You make the motion.
Providing it's a profit.
Correct.
I make the second, and they just...
Sure.
It's okay.
Did you vote? Sure, yes, all in favor. Joy and...
Yes.
Joy and is over there like, wah, wah, my ears.
Done? Okay, then we go in. I'll be good. I'd like to introduce Mr. Bill Oliver and Annalise Hattler. Okay. From Oliver Associates. They were contracted by the town to look at our Beijing wastewater treatment plant, and they're an engineering firm that actually surrounds us, our surrounding communities that have wastewater treatment plants, actually use the Oliver Associates to manage and operate their facilities. But we've asked them to come down and do a study, and what it's going to cost to upgrade everything as it should be. So, without further ado, Bill and Annalise.
Romantic careers you could have chosen.
Well, just back in college, I was going around, getting on wrong lines. And a waste water line was...
A man I knew who lived in England was in charge of taking affluent ways from a treatment plant, and his motto was, "There's money in book." Money in book.
Yeah, there is.
Boy, that's a business.
It's not on here.
And that's active, isn't it?
Yeah, it is.
We didn't know anything.
No. It's very bad.
So, I pass that hand down to some audience as well. I'm Bill Oliver, as you said, and I'm the senior partner at Oliver Associates. This is Annalise Hattler, one of our few partners as well. I run the design products and company, Annalise runs the contract operations group that we have. So, we're a sixty-eight person firm in Winterport. We represent about seventy communities around the state of Maine, all on water and wastewater issues. We also run twenty wastewater and water treatment plants.
Could you talk a little louder, because you're having a difficult time.
I'm sorry. I will try to talk up. So, we were asked back in November to review the town's wastewater infrastructure, and that resulted in this evaluation report that we had here. And we're here tonight to present the highlights of the report, to answer any questions which you might have. So, the handout here kind of covers the high points in the report, so I just want to go down through it if I could. So, on page one, there's a list of topics I want to just touch on briefly tonight. The first one is, I'm gonna spend a couple of minutes overviewing the existing wastewater infrastructure, which is basic sewers, pump stations, and wastewater treatment plants. And then talk about the benefits of what you're asked us to do, the capital planning process, because most families that have wastewater plants, they were put in thirty, forty years ago, in your case, twenty-six years ago. But they were very expensive to put in, and at that time, as everyone's saying, usually representing ninety percent of the cost of construction. So, the towns weren't putting in ten percent. What's happening now, these plants are all decades old, and they're starting to need upgrades, and funding is becoming more limited. So, by asking us to look at this plant, you know, right now, at its age, which I want to talk about, it's a very big time in the plant, because things are gonna start going wrong, and it's time to start being corrected on it. So, I just want to touch base on that. This type of, of report, it's called unit process analysis. Basically, we start at one end of the sewer system, and we follow the flow all the way through, take down to the plant, and go through each process of the plant, and get down to the discharge of the ocean. And the way wastewater plants work is, it's progressive through the unit process, where water gets cleaner as it goes through each step. So, we look at each step, to find this capacity, what it was supposed to do, what condition it's in. Sorry. And, um, and what it's made of, what, you know, what community needs to make sure it lasts for another twenty-six years. We then put costs on the upgrade and remediation of each process, and presented them the report. And this is important, before we go too far into this, is funding is still out there. There just isn't a kind of funding that's there before, but there is improved based funding now, and as I'm gonna talk about at the end, your community does qualify for most of those programs, and we've had a great, uh, good track record around the state of Britain funding area, so we want to talk about that. And then I'm talking about a timeline for making this all happen. From page two, just some quick facts about your system. It was built twenty-six years ago, nineteen ninety-two. And the thing about that is, most wastewater infrastructure processes were designed with a twenty-year useful life expectation. It doesn't mean that twenty years it all falls down around you, it just means that every twenty years, you should be looking to infrastructure and doing surgical upgrades. It serves about four hundred and twenty-five connected properties or users, and it represents probably about ninety percent of your population in town, it's mostly down in the urban area. There's twenty-six thousand linear feet or five miles of sewers that gets water from each home and brings it down to the treatment plant on Hudson Street. You've got four pump stations along the way, which I'll look at in a little bit more detail, that lift water up over low points in the system. And then down at the wastewater plant, there are two pump stations, one that brings the water into the plant, one that takes the water out of the plant and pumps it back down to pass the quality bag. So, you've got a primary wastewater treatment plant, and what that means is, it takes out pollutants that sedimentation only, it's kind of a basic type of treatment system, and it was allowed here in Lubecque, and also in Eastport, and Seriesport, and other coastal communities, because the amount of flow from this small community can transfer the water out in this huge tidal basin, it's small, so they largely put into stronger treatment, which is sedimentation. And they're basically settling out organic matter, solids, and also disinfecting the wastewater, killing off pathogens and disease-causing organisms. So, after the treatment, whatever you take out, it becomes what's called sludge, that has to be processed, the plant has removed. And then, uh, the water, the treated water, is pumped twenty-six hundred liters back down from Hudson Street, down to Water Street, where disinfection takes place with chlorine, and then by sulfate, they take out the chlorine. So, we're looking at it a little bit more detail. So, on the next page, page three, I think it's important to look at your system, and the fact that you're doing this study, not as many negative things, positive things, because this plant has served Lubecque well for twenty-six years, it's done a good job, it's been well maintained, well operated. So, a lot of plants are getting, aren't as lucky as yours are, they're in bad condition. Yours isn't, yours is in good condition. But it's at an age, it was designed for a twenty-year life, now it's twenty-six years, so you're six years beyond when things should start to break, and some of them have. You've got some in our whole equipment, nothing critical yet, but some of the stuff is starting to show signs of failure. You've got some of the major steel components in the plant, which I'm gonna look at within a second, that are corroding, which means they're gonna fail in the near future. And then some of the equipment that's still working, you can't get replacement parts anymore, okay? So, the special things I feel, telemetry, the alarms, electronics, that's all outdated now, like anything else in the electronic field. So, you know, as time goes on, the potential for failure becomes greater year after year. So, this is a good time to be looking at this. Another thing is, as I mentioned, the funding, I know, is hard to get, but you're eligible for it. And the important thing is to look for funding now, when you, when you have time on your hands, because if something fails, and you're not being corrective, and you're doing it reactively, there might not be any funding available. Now, we can start planning ahead, and look for funding, get things fixed before they break. And the goal of this whole process is to set the timer for the next twenty years, so it's important to look ahead, not what's going on now, but look ahead twenty years, or even a little bit more. On the next page, there's a photo that shows you the sewer system. And basically, you know, first, the plan decides, five miles of sewer, it's a decent amount of height. It all flows by gravity downhill to the plant on Hudson Street, except the one where there's four pump stations. There's one at the main street, one at South Street, one at Monument Street, and one at Johnson Street. And that's a submersible wastewater over local elevation depressions or low areas, up onto the gravity source, and it flows by gravity. It all goes down to the plant, down at the end of the map here on Clinton Street. So, we'll look at that a little bit more detail. On the next page, the pump stations are part of this, and the upgrade needs, and I want to spend a couple of minutes talking about them, there's four pump stations up in the system, and then two down at the plant. Pretty much all of them go into a gravity system, except for Monument Street, which actually pumps up to the Johnson Street station, then it goes by gravity. But it gets down to the plant, there's an inflow station, it gets treated, the treated water goes into an effluent station, the treated water, it gets pumped back to pass the quality bag. On the next page, though, and this is an important page to plan ahead, it shows what your stations look like, and five hundred six stations are submersible pump stations, where there's a picture showing here what that means. A submersible station means that the pumps are sitting down in the wastewater, as opposed to more, uh, more complicated stations where the water, where the pumps suck out of the water, like happens in the plumbing system. The reason that's important is, after twenty-six years of sitting down in a closed environment like this, all the mechanical equipment starts deteriorating. So, as you look for the next twenty years, the pumps, the rails that pull the pumps out, the piping in there, the valves, and the control panel that's got, those are all in marginal shape given, and they're almost good dead to themselves. But the concrete is in good shape, which may allow the cost of new pump stations excavating the hole and putting in a concrete station. That's all good, you can, you can keep it, but at some point in time in the future, you should really be upgrading the internal components of these pump stations. On the next page, there's just a table that shows your six pump stations. So, they're basically small, submersible stations up in the system upstream, with two bigger stations down at the plant. The inflow pump station is twenty gallons a minute, that's a suction lift station, meaning the pumps are inside the building. All the other ones are submersible stations, and the ones up in the sewer system are smaller than ones in the plant are large. So, on the next page, there's a schematic picture of the wastewater pump. I'll just go through it briefly, so, the major process analysis in that report we did, went through each one of these steps of the plant, and looked at its capacity, its condition, its upgrade needs, its ability to last for the next twenty years, and what should you do to make it last twenty years, or more. So, at the top of the page is a red arrow, showing raw sewage that comes in, and at the bottom of the page is treated effluent, that means the water's good enough to go back into the passing quality bag. And through each step here, you're making the water clean. So, when you first go into the plant, you go into a wet well, a real deep round tank, it's twenty-two feet deep, and that just collects the wastewater, holds it for a while, and then the pumps inside the plant, there's three inflow pumps, that lift it up into the plant for treatment. And once it gets lifted up, it goes into a perimeter treatment system, which removes debris from the wastewater, through screening and then sedimentation of sand and gravel things that are in the line. Now, it's kind of important, I'm gonna come back to this, that one of your major deficiencies of service plant, that's really handled for twenty-six years, is the fact that the head works, or that this grinder, there's a grinder up in this wet well to, to kind of remove debris so it doesn't pluck the pumps. This was not put into the plant when it was built, it was an afterthought, okay? Your head works to take out debris is after the pumps, okay? So, you were actually pumping debris to the pumps, and then trying to take it out. And for the first five or six years of the plant's operation, these pumps pluck it every two weeks or so, it's a major, a major deal. So, you actually, at some point in the past, I believe you got a spare grinder from Baileyville, and it hangs down in this wet well, twenty-two feet in the ground. So, I want to talk about that, because grinders have to be maintained. In order for the water to get down in, they have to hang down in this wet well, over a tank of raw sewage, in a confined space with explosive gases, and try to maintain it. So, it's a really, it's a really negative thing that I, that I think in an upgrade you should address, which I'll talk about. The wastewater, after it goes through the headworks and the pumps, and the screening and sedimentation, goes into two in-hub tanks. And in-hub tanks are kind of an old technology, but it works fine for this size community. It's basically a settling tank on another chamber, which I'll look at a picture in a second, and, and the pollutants and the solids that are brought in the wastewater, settle out of there, leaving cleaner water behind. The sludge or the removed solids go down to this tank below the clarifier, and sit there for, you know, for probably six months, and you bring it back twice a year. And then, it goes to a sludge drying bay, to remove water from the sludge, and you take it outside to dispose it. The clean water, the settled water, comes out of the top of these tanks, it goes to an effluent pump station, and then a chlorine injection manhole, where a couple of small pumps add chlorine to disinfect any disease-causing microbes that are in the wastewater. And then you've got a twenty-six hundred linear foot force vein between plant and Water Street, and in that distance, chlorine has time to act with the water and disinfect the pathogens. When you get down to Water Street, the law required you to add chlorine to kill the pathogens, and then you take out the chlorine to remove the chlorine, because chlorine has negative environmental effects out of the passing quality bag. So, you add a chemical called something like sulfite, that engages the chlorine, you measure the flow, and out it goes. So, that's your wastewater plants in a nutshell. On the next page, wastewater plants, each component has a design, uh, design criteria, but if you put it into a nutshell, it's only a couple of things we're looking at, flow, organic loading, and solid loading. So, your wastewater plant was designed twenty-six years ago to process up to a hundred and sixty-six thousand gallons a day of sewage, with a peak hourly flow of two hundred and eighty-eight thousand gallons a day. The organic loading measure is a thing called BOD, or biochemical oxygen demand, is basically a measure of how much organics in the water. The plant was designed to treat two hundred and three pounds a day of organic matter, and two hundred and forty-three pounds a day of solids loading measure is what's called TSS, the total suspended solids. So, that's what the plant was designed for, and then the lower part of the page shows what you're actually getting. Your average daily flow is only thirty thousand gallons a day, the highest month is forty-six thousand gallons a day, like in the springtime, or in the summer here, with seasonal loadings, and the high day and records is like a hundred and eighty-one thousand gallons a day. So, your plant has plenty of credial capacity to take all the force from the community, plus a lot more. So, that's one reason the plant has worked so well for all these years, because it's heavily underloaded. And as far as organic loading, it was designed to take two hundred and three pounds a day of organic matter, it's only taken seventy, and besides, two hundred and forty-three pounds a day, only getting fifty. So, again, heavily underloaded, which is, it's made the plant last longer in its condition. On page ten, so, the, the operation of your plant for the town, for the Rockford, for the screening, is governed by a license, a discharge license, it's covered by EPA and DDP, and there's different parameters that you test for periodically to see if the plant's in compliance. One is flow, you're licensed for a hundred and sixty-six thousand gallons a day. One is organic matter, or BOD, you're licensed for two hundred and three parts per million going out, and you have to remove thirty percent of what comes in. Same thing with solids, except it's a little bit higher, you're beginning to down to one forty-five parts per million, or fifty percent removed instead of thirty percent. As far as disease-causing bacteria, you have to disinfect to get down to no more than fifteen colonies for a hundred mils of wastewater. On an average basis, you can have a high day of up to fifty colonies, but just to keep the wastewater into the plant, it's full of millions and millions and millions of colonies of fecal coliform, so this is a huge reduction in pollutants. Chlorine can't be moved, one part per million going out, and the pH has between six and nine on the effluent. So, for the most part, your community has a good history of meeting this license, the plant should run well, and it's, it's worked for a lot of years. On page eleven, let's go back, and I'll look at some of the remediation, remediation cities. Again, I'm looking ahead for the next twenty years, not necessarily today, but this is what a submersible pump station looks like. It's really not a really pleasant thing, especially maybe in theater town, but it is what it is. The pumps are sitting down in a tank of raw wastewater. And raw wastewater is full of ammonia, and ammonia breaks down in water and releases hydrogen, and with sulfur in the water, you get hydrogen sulfide, which is the odor you get, plus hydrogen, uh, sulfuric acid. So, wastewater, by its own nature, is a breaks down in a septic environment, is corrosive. So, all these metal parts that are in here, after twenty-six years, in some of them are in tough shape. The concrete around these submersible stations is fine, but an upgrade would be going in here, replacing the pumps, replacing the rails, you can see these chains here, the apparatus that lift the pumps up on the rails, and there's a control panel up top. All those mechanical parts, they won't last another twenty years, so that's probably your upgrade. So, on a more pleasant picture, it's, so, once the water gets in the plant, it goes to perimeter treatment, it makes the water, it's supposed to make the water easier to treat. And in your plant, the original design was to have this wet well, twenty-two feet in the ground, with nothing in it, no parts in it, and the water was pumped up with suction lip pumps, these pumps ran your cellar of the plant, and then you pump it up to a stream, and then a grid settling tank to take out sand and gravel, you added chlorine there, and then it went out to these two in-hub tanks. But the trouble with this layout, with this configuration, is, any debris that gets into the sewer system, which is a lot, would plug your pumps, and this is a huge issue for years. So, at some point in time, you bought that grinder I mentioned, and you stuck it down in this wet well, and it's, it gets you by, but Bruce has to go down in here and maintain it, it's, it's, it's not a good situation. So, if you're looking ahead to upgrade the plant, most headworks are put ahead of the pumps, that's why it's called headworks, and not after the pumps. So, when we recommended an upgrade, to put in a vault out of the front yard, then we could install, let me get it down, then we could, you could install the grinder, a ventilated area that's safely open to go into, instead of having a manhole you have to hang down in there. Bruce, you can weigh in on that later if you want.
Sure.
On how much you like the grinder.
Yes, yes.
So, that would be like...
I just want to make out your grinder's roots.
It actually is called a muffin monster. You have to have a sense of chemistry when you're working this way. So, the grinder right now really doesn't need code, the ventilation doesn't need code. All the ventilation laws in wastewater plants changed in twenty-twelve, and so, you know, a well-ventilated area with a grinder in it before the plant would save a lot of wear and tear. And a lot of times in early plant upgrades, money was, was, was skipped, I think, in headwork stuff, and all that stuff, it saved capital costs upfront, and created operating problems for years down the road, so, in an upgrade, you should really address this. The training for the pumps are still working, but, I mean, they're tired, they've been twenty-six years in operation. The control panel that runs these pumps can't really get frustrated anymore, so in prior upgrade, you should replace the pumps and upgrade the control panel. On the next page, the heart of your plant is your in-hub tank, and this is about the simplest kind of treatment you can have in a municipal plant. It's basically nothing more than a glorified septic tank, like in a real home. Raw wastewater comes in to the top of the tank, there's a metal cone here, it kind of looks like the Tin Man and the Wizard of Oz, I guess is what I would compare it to, but the wastewater comes in, it falls down this cone, and settles in the tank below, which is the digestion part. And in the absence of oxygen over time, wastewater solids will break down, and, uh, into more of a liquid or form, and then you have to dump this tank out a couple times a year and send it to the drilling beds. But, um, the treated effluent is really the water that overflows in the tank after it's hit this cone here. Now, while this is a simple process, and in a lot of communities that have these, they're getting rid of them, just because of, there's some process problems, it's actually worked well here in Lubecque. I think part of this because it's so underloaded. So, we're recommending here you would keep these, but what we start to see happening here is because, when you, when you get into septic gases down here, that hydrogen sulfide, again, with water makes it very acidic, that's one of the strong acids you can make, and it's rotting out the metal here. So, if you sit on top of this tank and look at it, you can see gas bubbles coming up to holes in the metal. And at some point in time, this metal will let go. We, we run the Winterport plant, we only had one in-hub tank there, and all the metal let go, what, two years ago? And it dropped into the tank, and that was a big deal. So, we have to have it hoisted out, it's held up by chains now, but we're in a framing pattern now to try to get the plant, that's very good. But, the nice thing I think about Lubecque is, you notice this happening early on, so it's time to repair this before it...
Should we put the chains in now?
Well, I guess...
We need two by fours later, because the chains didn't quite cut it.
Yes.
Not good.
So, it needs legs.
It does. Well, they still need parts for this. It's not, it's not a real, it's not a common use technology, but there's still need parts for it. So, we recommend just letting this out and fixing all the internal components. On the next page, so, that's essentially how you treat wastewater, you settle out what, what gravity will take out, and the rest of it goes out as effluent. The last part of the system is disinfection. So, up at the wastewater plant, you've got some pumps that lift the wastewater, you inject it, you go through a valve pit and chemical manhole, inject chlorine into it. There's a twenty-six hundred foot line between the plant and Water Street, the chlorine does its job in doing, takes out the pathogens. And then you get down to Water Street, you go up to a flow meter to measure the flow, you go through a second chemical manhole and inject bisulfate to remove the chlorine residual, and then you sample it, and it goes out to the bag. So, one of the things here, you know, these are minor things on an upgrade, the chemical pumps you would obviously upgrade, those are small components. The static meters and the chemical tanks, some of those aren't there, or are they not working? Those should be replaced. One of the biggest things we saw here is that the way, the way this works is the bisulfate pumps that take out the chlorine, turn on when the flow meter tells them there's flow coming, because when the pumps wrap up at the plant, the force main kind of just sits there. And you have had some issues in the past, where there's a little bit of a lag time between when the flow meter sees flow and says, hey, turn on the pumps, just a split second, the DPs that down here during that split second, and measure chlorine going out, because you couldn't hit it fast enough, just like a second. What we would do, if the new technology is available, when you, when you upgrade this, we would have these bisulfate pumps come on... we would have these bisulfate pumps come on with telemetry, which you have all through town measuring the alarms of the plant. When the, when the, um, effluent pumps of the plant come on and start to fill the force main, that's when you should start putting the bisulfate in. So that's a, a simple fix and would get you out of any trouble with DEP in the future. Although, I mean, you've been able to, to manage it.
Yeah, just barely.
Okay, on the next page, so everything you take out of the plant is now called sludge. And, um, there's a lot of elaborate technologies to process sludge. The creep that has the simplest one again is a drying bed. The sludge is pumped out of the in-hub tanks with pumps down in the basement. You can add lime and polymer to it to help coagulate it. And then it's spread out on these drying beds outside. Uh, they're going to pole ground with a roof but with no walls. Over time, the water will drain down through the beds into a filter media. The water goes back to the plant and this dry sludge stays on the bed. Then you haul it off with a tractor to dispose it. So looking ahead to twenty years, you know, there's a, a lot of plants that have drying beds, want to get rid of them. Um, and there's a lot of mechanical equipment that you can use to process sludge. But I think here in Lubec, it's actually worked reasonably well for you. What we would suggest on this kind of upgrade, the lime and polymer systems are kind of antique and in tough shape. You'd probably replace those. Um, the roof of the pole barn should be replaced, just part of that panel. And you might consider putting some panels up on the sidewalls to keep rain and snow and, you know, wind off this. You'd get better and faster drying. But we would keep the drying beds through Lubec. Now, on the next page, with any upgrade, you should also look at the building, the support building. It's in really good shape for its age. And just some things we noted on our report, the roof is twenty-six years old. It's not really in bad shape, but if you're doing an upgrade, it won't last twenty more years. You might want to consider doing that with twenty-five year shingles, let's say. Uh, some of the doors and frames in the plants are steel doors and corroded in the plant environment. You might replace some of those. Your lines, uh, telemetry, motor control centers are outdated. And some of them you can't get parts for. Some of them don't work right now. So you would do a little bit of electrical upgrade. The ventilation doesn't need code right now. Uh, all the curves, as I said, changed in 2012. So you need to, it's all air changes per hour that are required for, for safety and for life safety. Your frame is in a plant that's rolling on its last legs, so the boiler should be replaced. Um, you know, looking ahead, you're, hey, looking ahead the next twenty, thirty years, uh, you should fix some of the support systems. So on the next page, from the report, we went through each item and you get a cost analysis. And wastewater plants aren't cheap. If you were to build a wastewater plant today, you'd be talking probably fifteen, twenty million dollars local just to put it together and that kind of your stories. So we itemized different repairs that I mentioned here in twenty-eighteen dollars. If you look on page, uh, eighteen at the bottom, so we're estimating four-and-a-half million dollars of potential upgrade needs for a capital plant to move ahead. And as far as you go, it depends on how much funding you can acquire. Because as we're going to talk about it, you're not going to be able to fund this locally, um, with this type of repair. Most, most units we work with can. One of the things I just want to mention, this is, this is in, this is based on our database. Uh, we work in about seventy towns around the state. We do a lot of plant upgrades. We do around like five right now as we speak. So we have active numbers and contractors of what it costs to do these kind of jobs. Um, but it's important to know that these, these curves cut like five percent per year for construction and function. So for every year a plant doesn't get funded, with a job this size, you're adding like another quarter million dollars. So it's, it's important to get it done sooner than later. On the next page, page nineteen. So if you let the board borrow this money on your own with no outside funding, this is what the impact of the end of sewer use fee. Um, right now, your usage fees are about seventy-four dollars a quarter for the average user or two-ninety-five per year for the average user. Um, D E P looks at user rates in terms of the published income. They look at the twenty-sixteen updated census data and, and I know you've done an income survey, but their data says thirty-two thousand, six thirty-four is what they have on record. The income survey would trump that. If you start with funding, they're going to say, okay, if your rate hits two percent of that, that would be excessive sewer use fee. Right now, a rate of, uh, two-ninety-five per average user is point-nine percent. So you're probably not going to be eligible for D E P grants. But there's other agencies I'm going to talk about that you already know before. So they would come in and say, we'll give you a little interest loan. D E P has all kinds of loan money. And, uh, they would go twenty years at one-and-a-half percent interest. If you borrowed four-point-five million dollars, the debt service would be twenty-six-two thousand dollars per year. And that would raise your average sewer bill by six fifteen per year, um, or two-twenty-eight a quarter. And that's what the town's still putting in twenty-five thousand dollars as you're doing now. So this would raise your, your sewer rates to be two-point-eight percent of your median household income during a job. And that would make your financial hardship so. They won't fund you now because you raised it too low, but you can afford a loan straight out of the plant on your own without outside funding. So you would go to the next page, page twenty. The two major funding sources that are available now are three, I guess. It's D E P, which you really can't qualify for, for grants, I'll give you loans. The rural development, which used to be called Farmer's Home, does have grants and loans available. And C B G, which I, I hear you, tonight you're just getting, also has major grants and loans available. So you qualify for rural development funding at this median household income, you're eligible for up to a seventy-five percent grant. Now, a lot of times it's hard to get those. Most of the time, they're more than a forty-five percent grant or even less. But you're eligible for seventy-five percent grants, just hard to get those. If you could get a seventy percent grant, that would add fifty-seven thousand dollars a year to debt service, to your budget. But if you're putting in, if you continue to put in twenty-five thousand dollars as the town's been doing for debt service, it would be thirty-two thousand a year. That would add nineteen dollars a quarter to the average sewer bill. It would put you at one-point-one-three percent MHI. If we're, and get the report wasn't as elaborate detail, I know I'm going to be scripted, but the point is there is help out there. If you want to get a forty-five percent grant, uh, it would, it would raise the average sewer rate from two-ninety-five per year, uh, up to five for the year or one-thirty-three a quarter. So again, that'd be quite a bit of money. That's one-point-sixty percent MHI. But it would be beneficial to file with rural development to see what can happen. Because usually what these projects get funded by is a group of different agencies, not just one. So you would get rural development money as far as they could. Then on the next page, one of the business agencies, the C B G grants. Um, and I'm not sure the money you just got was in what, what was the pool?
Might go in the plans.
Okay.
It's not the same as it is now.
Yeah, but the fact you're eligible for that means you're eligible for this. And you get an income survey which showed that your average, um, your lower and moderate income in Lubec is sixty-two-point-one-seven percent of, of the surveyed, uh, parties. And all you need is fifty-one percent to qualify. So you're, you're well into the qualification. Um, and C B G offers up to a million dollars of grants, uh, and up to two years in a row for wastewater projects. And they've been very successful in, in pulling this together. So between rural development and C B G, you want to try to get the best package you can, uh, to move forward. And they're, they're very familiar with the needs of communities like yours. So on page twenty-two, and I'm almost done here, you know, a tentative project schedule, uh, it's all depending on when funding's available, but you asked us last fall to do this evaluation. We did it over the winter. We submitted a report in March. We would suggest that if the town accepts these recommendations, um, or if you have modifications you want, we'll make this for you. But when you get to a final report, you, you should present it to R D or to C B G and ask for immediately to set it down here to talk about these needs. And we would suggest you do that as soon as may, just to get, keep things moving. Um, then submit funding applications and get this in say by September. And so we've had funding, we've had a prison one year. We've had other funding for ten years. I had one project, I had one child when we started to go for funding, and I had four when we're done. And I'm not going to do it, but it's ten years. So that was a worst case. So it was a long time. Um, we just did an upgrade in Norwood, about the same size, about four or five million dollars. And we applied for funding a year ago and we just started funding, so we're starting to design it right now. So it can be as fast as a year, it can be as long as ten, ten years. I think they're saying pretty well because, I hate to say this because I know it's a lot of money, um, for most communities, but in terms of putting up with it, some of the ones that are funding around the state are twenty million dollars. So this is actually a small upgrade and you have good eligibility. So I would think it'd be a good candidate and at least in me and the hand of the funding, I want this place.
Have you explored, I mean, and this is just off the top of my head, that this flows into Possum Aquati Bay and we're concerned about the quality of the water here and should something deteriorate, would there not be a group that might want to fund a project like this to maintain the high quality of water that goes into the bay?
It would be great if they came forward. Well, it would be great. I mean, we haven't run into anybody that's offered to do that other than these public agencies.
I was just thinking at a general level.
Yeah, we've actually tried to apply for funding before. Um, and what they like to give that funding for would be more in the shelter control versus actually infrastructure.
Well, you know, effluent, if there were more effluents into the water, that would affect the shelter.
Right, we've tried a couple of times to use it for infrastructure and it's really not quite what that's meant for. There hasn't been a lot of EPA funds, you know, available to do this kind of work.
Oh, too bad.
Yeah, there used to be like stag grants and different pots of money. You could use a half a million dollars to kind of combine with this, which was offshoot.
Sure.
It really helped out a lot.
When we turn on the news and we hear about Port Pearl, um, we get angry. But it's not Port Pearl when it comes into the state, right? And a lot, the state program you just mentioned was a Port Pearl project where senators and congressmen could divert money to their own districts.
Sure.
And we were able to fund some major upgrades using our own, well, it wasn't Port Pearl. It was money funded to Maine. But there's kind of like thunder upon that. So a lot of those programs aren't being funded right now under the current thinking down in Washington. But what we usually do is we go to these three major agencies and R D and C B G are probably your best bet. We always, we always get the congressional offices involved and let them know that there's any kind of money out there that they're familiar with, you know, that they'll put in a good work for you and support and stuff. But anything that would be on the table that we can locate. So the most important thing really would be to get, if you could get funding any year, uh, the designer plant upgrade is usually about a year's time. So you might be looking at funding in, say, if you got it in March twenty-nineteen, maybe get the design done by the end of twenty-nineteen into twenty-twenty. And try to get it on line within two construction seasons. So twenty-twenty would be the earliest you could probably do. Okay. So I did want to mention that part of the contract you, you broke with us last year to do this study didn't include us submitting whatever funding applications you want us to do. So we're available to do it with you if you want us to. It's part of our lump sum fee and you have a later sacrifice. And well, part of the funding, it doesn't mean you have to take it if you, if you don't get the package you want. Because your plant isn't failing at this point. You're just trying to try and plan ahead before it does.
I have a very basic question of something maybe you can ask me. If, if the plant's lasted twenty-six years on a, what had a twenty-year lifespan and looking at some of the, for lack of a better, poundage numbers, if we have a plant that's lasted this long and we're putting in, like you said, a flow of one-hundred-and-sixty-six whatever and it was thirty thousand, does any of the cost potentially come down with some of the equipment not needing to put so much of this through? Or is it kind of just, you know what I'm saying? I mean, you, you've got a, you've put in the system, let's say they could put in a hundred thousand pounds or whatever, but as Lubec, it's only using thirty thousand. And yes, that's giving it six more years. But is there a difference between like a system putting a hundred thousand through as opposed to maybe, uh, pieces that aren't as expensive that only put through the thirty thousand?
You know, it seems as though it would be.
Does that make sense?
But for this kind of a process, probably not so much. Because for example, the in-hub tanks, they're already there. Most of the carcass is in the concrete. So when you replace it, you're going to replace the same internal guts. You could, I mean, starting over now, if you looked at these numbers, you might say, well, let's go a little smaller. And you could have saved money there, but then the pumps and things, I mean, um...
They're going to be sized pretty much for the force mains that are there.
Yeah.
Not so much the amount of flow they're pumping through.
But I mean, it makes sense. It kind of, it kind of looks like you put in a Rolls Royce and we only needed a Cadillac.
No, no, uh, one thing I should mention, because this will part of the discussion, secondary treatment is a national law. So there are sixteen thousand wastewater plants in the United States. And when they put those in, everybody has COVID in every community, uh, fifty of them were granted waivers of secondary treatment to go with just primary, which is what you have here. Um, and primary means instead, instead of just settling out the effluent, you're actually growing microbes in the plant to biodegrade it and it makes a lot cleaner water. The reason we don't have it here is because you have such a tremendous tide out here in the bay. Of the fifty plants that were, that were given these waivers, fifteen were remaining. And of those, of the fifty nationwide, only thirty are left because the environmental groups are always pushing secondary, secondary, secondary. Now, the reason I bring it up now, two reasons. One is, one of the questions we did look at is, do you think you'll need to go secondary here? And, uh, we, we had talked to D E P as we went through it, that there's no plans for it. Because, um, they did, Bucksport was primary. They made them go secondary. Winterport's going to have to as well, but they're in an estuary and you're, you're not here. You're in, you're in a major tidal underwater. If we did have a secondary plant, your point would be well taken because to, to size tanks to go bugs in, that very depends on the loading coming into the plant. So instead of doing, you know, the two-hundred pounds they had back twenty-six years ago, we might say, let's just do a hundred pounds. You always want to make some capacity for growth, but...
Sure.
But it, it isn't, it, it wouldn't be as simple on this plant as it seems to downsize it.
The other thing that we are facing here, the conversation is about and happens frequently, is the hundred-year-old flood, you know, the hundred-year flood, which is going to happen, they say, in about the next twenty years. Um, but that would require moving the plant because that's at the lowest point in this town.
But isn't it in the floodplain then?
Oh, my God, yes.
Yes, it is.
The plant's flooded?
Yeah. We just, the whole town, I'm sure all of the neighbors went through with the federal government, the reevaluation of our floodplain. I live on the water. I was not in a floodplain. Now, part of my land is in a floodplain. And as engineers, I'm surprised you didn't look at that to say, to see that that's in a floodplain. So my question to the select board earlier today was, do we have to move this plant? Because in twenty years, we'll be pushing uphill from the water where the water's going to be flowing into the plant.
Well, you know, I'm not sure that's true, with all due respect. I think that, um, first of all, if it's in a floodplain, floodplain is engineers. During design with federal money, we have to wave it into it. And what's what happened with the, your plant, you look at the hundred-year elevation, which, um, you might have to raise the walls and take, and you put these new guts in there, but you don't tear the whole plant down. Um, and, you know, there's a lot of studies out on how high the tides are going to go. Some people say, you know, a hundred years is going to be three feet, some say six feet. But you're designing here for twenty, it's a twenty-year design update. What's that? We're not designing for a hundred years from now. Okay, so, and you, you tell me about the map floodplain. In my occasion, the flood versus the ocean rising or...
Right, exactly.
Okay, well, the ocean rising is something that is out fifty or a hundred years, if it happens at all. And there's, there's a lot of disputed models out there. You, you could make a decision not to move the plant, but if you're designing for the next twenty years, why not wait to see what really happens? As far as naming a floodplain, when you do actual upgrades of the plant or at the pump stations, you will, you know, we would check the actual elevations and make adjustments, but we wouldn't, we wouldn't move everything.
You just, you just compensate by making it higher.
But you have to get a foot above the hundred-year floodplain.
Right, and we'll have to evaluate all that because we haven't done any design. That'll be totally evaluated.
That's part of the, that's the design. So the, I think the question was, did it have to be moved or did we just compensate for the elevation changes and...
We never envisioned moving it. I mean, we...
Perfect. We didn't want to move deeper.
No, I... Yeah, I had a question regarding the, the canopy, uh, over the drying pits. That fiberglass roofing, was that put on? Was the design, it was, wanted sunlight to warm to help the drying? Is that why that was covered that way?
The thing was to keep the water from the rains going back into the slide. It's dry. You want to keep it dry from that point on.
And then the other idea of leaving the walls open was so that air would carry off moisture, is that...
Yeah, and we wouldn't recommend making a sealed container, sealed building. But, um, if you had some partial walls, you could keep some of the side drains from coming in and wetting the side. The trouble with drying beds is, I mean, they're not that efficient. But they work in small communities, but once you get it dry, you don't want to keep re-wetting it. So, you know, we, we still want airflow, but I don't think you need airflow on the whole floor.
And it's been my observation in this community of fifteen years that I've been here that we don't have a lot of new construction right in town. So the number of users will probably go off the chart for the system, outside of town maybe, but not for right inside.
I, I, I'm sorry, I can't just go to that. I see that we're actually in a, an ebb and that we're just about to...
What I'm saying is...
Just about to build and have more people in the downtown area, not less. So I'm a bit misunderstood.
Well, maybe there'll be more people using the existing system, but the downtown area, how many new houses have been built in the downtown area? On the, in the system? I'm just talking about in the system. On the, in the system, I'm just talking about in the system. I don't see where that number's gonna change of users, but the amount that is used in the existing system.
Sorry, you said to the point I had is, I mean, it was built, designed, basically the physical structure of what's here, thirty percent of it was empty.
Yeah.
Now we've got thirty percent, if it fills it, we're still not gonna reach, but from that part of the usage.
You see what I'm saying? So I don't think.
It's not new.
You know, more accommodate a fifty percent increase of that.
I don't think you, I don't think you were.
No, we, we don't know much about where they were.
Yeah.
Because there's only a cross series of downsides of what you have.
Yeah.
And, uh, in most plants, once you downsize on your license, you can't get the number back, so you should keep the numbers where they are.
Yeah, no, and like I said, I wasn't looking at the downside, unless, you know, four and a half million becomes two million, I know, but other than that, no, so.
Especially since it's primary treatment.
That's right.
It's all getting numbered back if you downsize.
I don't think it needs to be explained, you're just keeping it, keeping it working for the next year.
Barbara? Mr. Oliver, you said that you would help the community by applying for the grants, that's part of the agreement. Would you also administer the, the grants for us?
Yes, if you hire us to do that.
That's an additional cost?
Yes.
What would that cost be?
It's in the tables. So there's an allowance for design. I mean, simply, if you get the grant money, then you have to hire an engineer to design. Uh, we would, we would like to have a chance, but I mean, there's other firms who say as well. And the framework you're gonna do the design, in general, that firm would stay on and have an inspector on site, and then administer the inspection, the contractor, and also the grants. So, you know, most of the time, once we're in there, you say, you know, we're forced to, we get hired to stay on, but it's all a town's choice.
So that's already in the budget?
It's in the, it's in the budget.
On the special allowance, three hundred thousand?
That's correct, yeah.
So whoever gets the design, they would administer the grant.
And that's an allowance, allowance means you're gonna negotiate that with some firm.
Because it's federal money, would we have to go out for a big process though, Carol? And then we would have to be go with the lowest bidder?
No, that's not true.
You know, you know.
No, you have to.
That's not true.
Most qualified.
For the, for the actual construction, we do have to go out for, if it's, go for the design procurement, you do not have to go out for this. We, we do this all the time.
I mean, you could.
You can if you want to.
No, I just want to know.
I listened to their study, we're glad to do it. The next day, we, and we're glad to help you get funding, beyond that, it's up to you. Uh, and, you know, what I always tell people is, check our references. There's three or four firms in Maine that do this, and, uh, check our references, before you make your decision.
Mr. Oliver, thank you very much, very nice presentation.
This is lovely you had.
And what I wanted to address my board with is that if we follow this, we're four years farther down, so that's our thirty-year-old system. And really, it sounds like the minute can't be lost to go after money, also now, or, uh, when we want to make the improvement, which is tomorrow.
So.
Yeah. Because you're gonna have, the time's gonna slip away really fast, and if these monies are out there, um, then we should be going after it right now.
Okay, we're good job, thank you. I have one more slide. But that's okay. Oh, it wasn't the, the best one either. So on page twenty-two, decide to conclude. Um, so what the study kind of covered is to say, okay, the, your system, pump station three wastewater plant, have served the town of Lubet well for twenty-six years. The sewers generally have a hundred-year design life, so that they're all, you know, they're all in good shape. We did look at springtime flows here. A sewer set to fail when the groundwater comes up, you start to see a lot of water shots to the plant. Your, your flows are generally, you know, and you get some peaks, but your sewer's, it's, it's new, it's in pretty good shape, so that's seventy-five years down the road. But the plant, you know, the plant needs to be looked at. It's been well maintained and operated, but you've got some major equipment that's nearing or beyond the end of useful life. Some of it isn't working, some of it is ready for network, and some of it is just outdated. So it's not gonna last another twenty years, now's the time to start looking at it. There is also grant funding available, you're eligible for it. The key is to get into the, the, the program and, um, apply for it and get your name for it, because you're eligible for it. And I guess my final thought is that, you know, we get karma to a lot of towns, especially the towns where we're running the plants in. We, we don't sell out the run people's picking plants, but what happens is, the, the state shut down the last school for operators in nineteen eighty-seven. And so all those operators are retiring now, and so a lot of communities find themselves, they don't have guys like Bruce that are, uh, you know, qualified to run plants. And often, by the time we get involved, plants that, that fall apart. So you guys are, as you said, you're a few years ahead of the curve, nothing has fallen in the, in the tank yet. Um, so you should get the funding now while the drilling is working.
Yes, thank you, thank you very much.
Since this is here, I think it's appropriate also to thank you for your use on here.
And thank I should.
Not gonna always get thanks in glory, but, uh, I don't think the twenty-six years is a mistake in, in the shape that it's in, so.
It's very conscientious.
I'll give you some time, sir.
I thought the last page was gonna be the three additional children you had.
We only have two kids. Sounds like you and I have the same number of couples on that here.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, if you have one, I love, I can throw it away.
Do you want to keep some?
Yes, sure.
The public. Yeah, that would be good to have in the hall. I can put it on outside.
Throw that on, yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna need some ideas.
Oh, sure. Yeah, I promise. Okay.
I kept this one because I had money. Sure.
Most accurate. The errors.
It's, uh, definitely. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'm putting here, sorry. Um, infrastructure, oh, Terry, Terry.
Man, hold on.
Yeah, and Dan Byers, the gentleman from Rural Development, that will be.
That's a cutoff for this year, September? Application would have to be September this year?
No, it, the application actually, it's, it's, um, just submitted the same time we did yours, like, it's the end of, um, March, so we would have to start working.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I have a question regarding. And when you've done these in the past, where, what's our next step? Do we have to put this on our town meeting, which is in August, or is it sooner?
That's a good question.
Usually after you get funding, you vote at the town meeting.
Right, I mean, you have to have a sweet time.
We haven't been able to send any, although we make plenty of special town meetings.
What we need to do first would be to have a meeting with, um, funding agencies to kind of see what they could do to help in this. So you'll let us know what we have to do on our end, to get this permission from the people to.
You on what we're gonna do.
Yes, if we need us part of it, put it on our August meeting, then we would probably need to know in the next.
It's just informative even.
No, if we had to vote on even. We're thinking about, nobody's gonna do any work with us, the town being behind. Yeah, I think there's, like, they'll set up the funding meeting soon in May, and then try to get an idea from them what they may be able to do. Like, it may be not, it may not be this year that we have that vote for the exact amount that's gonna be available, because the CBB process will run into next year. So. Would we like to make a motion to set up a funding meeting in May?
Yes, yes.
Second, do I have second, I'll make a, all in favor?
I.
Excellent.
It was easy, we.
Just a, a little more on that, if, uh, at any point in time you want to have a public meeting to discuss what we just did tonight. We'll do it anytime, but usually when you get a form of meeting to promote a town meeting, it's because you're asking to approve the package that you've gotten for funding. You're not gonna know what that is until there's a few more kids for it, so, um.
We need a public hearing between the, so.
That's what the kids will be on.
Two more kids, no worries.
Nine more kids.
Well, we're being touched, thank you.
Okay.
We need a motion to sign equipment, plan, deed.
Motion to sign equipment, plan, deed, and then escort the bid from, the bid for the, the.
Taxpayer property.
Taxpayer property, if we got the.
We got the payment for, we got the payment.
So it's on.
Do you need a witness? Is that it? All right, over. Here we go. You're not gonna witness? While we're doing that, I, uh, we mentioned last meeting that the nomination papers are available April thirtieth, and I promised to announce some positions that are available. Two positions for select board, assessor, overseers of the core. Those are two positions, those are three-year terms. MSAD nineteen board of directors, two positions for three-year terms. One position for the Lubet Water District for a three-year term. And the budget committee, nobody ran, um, so we stagger those. One position for one year, one position for two year, and one position for three year. And the nomination papers are available April thirtieth, and they need to be returned by June eighth. And the last announcement I have is there's gonna be a rabies summit here, May eighth, May nineteenth, that's a Saturday, from nine AM to eleven, it's out here in the fire station. And that's, um, put on by Little River and Rhonda, our wonderful animal control officer sets that up, and so, that's all. Okay, so, uh, public comment? Mike?
I see there is a executive session on your meeting schedule. Does the board anticipate any action that they will, uh, take after they come out of executive session?
There might be.
Thank you.
Well, we wanted to mention that. No.
One, one senior person.
No, there, there might be a, there might be a vote. But not on this presentation, I think we, we made a motion on that. For, for this.
I just, yes, a question.
Is this regarding executive?
Oh.
Right, right.
Should we do committee updates first?
Yes, committee updates.
Okay.
Rachel Venus had a committee meeting, right?
Yeah, I, I just, I wanted to say the Economic Development Committee met today, and we are going to be, I think, our next meeting will probably be May the twenty-first, and hopefully it will be with Stephanie McBarlane of the, uh, Island Institute, who is gonna come and talk to us about broadband and fiber optics. Okay. Dan has a word for, about microelectrolytes. Okay, and the recycle meeting, the next one, will be May the eleventh, Friday.
Okay.
Revolving would be, I believe, May first, barring any, uh, convenient insert of any meeting. But at the current time, it's May first.
So.
May day.
Safe Harbor is next Thursday, on the twenty-sixth. Uh, Tony's not here, but I believe the Harbor Board is on the twenty-third, this Monday, at six. And there's a Shelterfish Committee meeting on May seventh. And should we mention that the public hearing that was scheduled May second for dangerous buildings? Dangerous buildings has been, we believe it's being abated, and we're not going to call the public hearing as of now. But it was posted. You're welcome to come and join us for our budget meeting that we're now having. To board.
The meeting is gonna cancel then?
Well, not canceled, because it's already been officially able to cancel, which is not, it's not necessary. They'll be on for another meeting. Yeah. Public, uh, public comment?
I guess, I just mentioned, um, I guess there's been some little discussion perhaps, I want to make sure everyone understood, there's been quite a bit of activity down on Water Street. And, uh, just to make sure that all are aware that besides normal legal activity that towns used to do, any work being done down there that you see is not with taxpayer dollars? Um, so, you know, I just, I've heard a little stunt about about that, and I just thought it was probably actually good information that maybe we should get better on top of when bright shiny things show up in town that maybe we can tell you what they are. Everybody likes big shiny things, but, uh, uh, this is all being done privately by the owner of the property, so. Thought it, thought that was why I had.
Well, it was on Facebook.
Which is the reason why I'm so very under it, because I gave up on that thing a long time ago.
That's right. So, uh, there is, and no further comments.
I have one question while, actually one statement. In this, um, Rural Development offering that he gave on the funding, it states that, I mean, and we, we've gone through this a hundred times before. The max median household income is just thirty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars.
That's why I did divide with him. He talked about the low to water income survey that we've done.
Right, did you talk to him, tell him that? I gave him all that information.
Yes, I did.
But it's.
We're, we're at the sixty-one percent LMI. He said.
He said that.
Yes, yes.
But if, if this is reduced to twenty-two, that could make us.
You know, put a genetic.
I agree, but what is it?
So where does this information come from?
I have no idea.
Did you answer all the questions on the census? Is this where they glean?
Because they take.
Averages?
Yeah, no, they take into consideration people who are here perhaps during the summer, uh, incomes of those people, and if you put them all together, that's how they come up. Isn't it true that when John Sutherland was here, I think?
I don't think that's right. I think it should be correlated with the people that are here permanently.
Well, we have a new survey, and I'm not sure what the mean income is, but I, I think that's an extremely valid point. And we did give him the new survey, they gave him the LMI sixty-one percent, whether they'll take that income medium or not, I'm not sure. So I agree with you, we need to get the money. I, that doesn't sound right to me.
We will, we'll find it, but that, that.
Your clean water, your clean water's the angle.
So, uh, may I mention to adjourn?
Thank you all for coming.